So hello, everybody. We'll get started. First on our agenda is a discussion of a proposed petition zoning amendment. With Liz and Pat Pittman.
It hasn't been petitioned yet.
Or it's planning on being petitioned.
But it could be a planning board.
And it could be, I think it's probably a little late for it to be a planning board amendment. But yeah, we've got until seven o'clock. I'd like to see if we can get you in and out in that time.
Super, thank you.
And give you a little bit of feedback.
That's what we're hoping for.
Maybe you could just tell us what's up here and.
Yeah, so we don't want to take a lot of your time, but what somebody looked up for us was that there's an article that says you can have up to six units. And we were asking if we could petition for up to the units that are already in this building, which is Dowd's country in which there are twenty-four, could we ask for that? And I don't know how you ask for that without changing what we've tried to write and get it appropriate for everybody to look at and next month approve. So we thought we just had to ask for some feedback and tidbits. Vicki.
Um, yeah, I was just gonna say the first, well, I'll tell you how I feel about this. And I would like it to be not for seniors, I would like it to be for anybody. And not to, I think it's an incredible burden for the planning board to have to verify who's living there every year. I mean, I don't personally want to go and knock on doors and go, are you fifty-five or is there somebody fifty-five here? So I would like it to be allowing more density for people who might be young families, divorced person, you know, with a child, that's my personal feeling. I believe also that twenty-four is a lot. I don't know, do they have twenty-four rooms to rent?
They have twenty-six.
Twenty-six, and would each one of those rooms be appropriate for a dwelling unit?
So we don't, we don't really have any details yet. We had a brainstorming session yesterday and somebody said, we really only want to go up to fifteen units, but what if something brilliant happened and you could, you know, it was twenty-thirty and it made sense to make all this modern stuff in a really small space, who knows? But I guess my question or my concern is that I thought Lime wanted to try to keep some options for seniors and we as a, we, I don't know, a few of us, that was our goal, it wasn't for all. And you think somebody would have to knock on the door every year and ask them if they're fifty-five?
Well, that's what you're saying right here is that the planning board will administer this section in accordance with the site plan regulations. Age restriction compliance will be documented through recorded deed coverments or agreements.
Oh, gosh.
And so that puts it on here, and so I would, that's like, well, so I think our goal is to have more housing. I think that the people who own this building could restrict it to fifty-five. But I don't want to, you know, have the planning board have to be responsible for that.
Absolutely.
So whoever gets to own it would be, you know, it's fine, they could run it that way and it wouldn't have to be exclusively in that way. And then if, for example, you didn't have people who are fifty-five to go into that, you know, any specific unit, you wouldn't, people wouldn't be sweating or losing rent because you could rent it to somebody else. I mean, this is my personal opinion.
Sure.
And I also just, there's, I mean, it should be section four point five seven, not four seventy-five.
Okay.
Because four seventy-five is after, you know, so just to be in order. I also, I wish, as I said before, that it wasn't going to be just for inns. And we don't even have inns, so wherever you have inns, it should say lodging accommodations.
An establishment, a building or just a building, or we should keep establishment?
I would say existing buildings.
Okay, great.
For me.
Lodging is for transient people.
Well, this is reuse of lodging, so what it comes down to is that there are only so many places. I mean, if you have it all over town, I mean, Lockline Lodge, there'd be Breakfast on the Connecticut, there'd be Lyman and and Mary Bowden's, Latham or Dowd's, or whatever you call it. So four places that this could apply to, and if we're looking at, I mean, why couldn't it apply to other larger buildings instead of just inns or, you know, lodging accommodations?
That's fair.
Like Nancy Brandon's house.
Like Nancy Brandon's house, yep, great. So I would, I would like it to be a little more loose.
You'd love it to be spot zoning.
Well, that's, I believe it would be considered spot zoning because it only benefits four properties. It does not benefit adjacent properties. It just says this property, this property, this property, and this property, that's it.
So if we said existing buildings, it would not spot zone?
It would, it would, no, right, it would be covering every single building.
Right. Okay. And you're saying if whoever ends up owning it, they could say, they could look at applications and say.
They could run it as a senior, or senior housing.
Okay, but yeah, but the planning wouldn't. I don't know where, I'm sorry how that came out, that shouldn't be.
No, no, that's, that's, that's fine, I just, you know, it's just like, you know, realistically, how is that going to happen?
Yeah, no.
I don't think we have like the staff either, I'm not saying the planning, you know, but if we say, oh, staff could do it or the select board could do it. Nobody wants to have to do that, so the object is to get more housing and if you want to run that particular building for senior, that is great because that does fulfill the plan. Just getting back to just where you say, to see if the town will vote to amend the line zoning ordinance. If you just cross that, you don't have to say pursuant to anything, you just say, we're remending the zoning ordinance by adding a new subsection to Article Four, creating a provision titles. So this is just right here by, you know, it's very beginning.
Okay, to see if the town, okay, say that one more time?
To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning ordinance by adding a new subsection.
Yep.
To Article Four District Reg. And then you need to change the section to four point five seven.
Yep.
Okay, and then you say adaptive reuse of existing buildings for housing.
Existing buildings. Housing, for housing, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, so that just broadens it.
Yep, okay.
And then, you know, then that title would have to be changed, you know, the bold. And then to promote the preservation and continued productive use of historic buildings within the town of Lime while creating small-scale housing opportunities for people. And I don't even think you have to say consistent with the goals of the master plan. And, because we don't have a specific housing chapter in the master plan.
Okay.
So you don't want to reference something that doesn't exist.
Sure.
So I would just say for people, period, because you're not going to do it. My personal opinion and this, the whole board should weigh in is that it should be commercial and Lime Common. But that's, so we don't have every barn getting converted.
Oh, keep all buildings around the common commercial?
No, 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 just have it in the two districts rather than the rural, cross out rural district. That's my personal opinion, but I just don't think you're going to get a whole lot of traction across town to adopt something that would be all through the world district.
Okay, just in the common and commercial.
I kind of disagree.
Okay, well, this is why I'm saying, this is my personal opinion.
Mickey's got a bunch of good ideas here, so let's go ahead.
Absolutely, it's just that, just taking it as a petition is not what I think.
That's something, and then where you have like the under C, right, permitted conversion. I would keep, keep one and two, there's some changes that need to be done to wanting to keep that and keep three and four. And then it seems that five doesn't really, you don't really need that. Because that's talking about the design and we're not going to require retention of common areas for people or for community use. You don't have to do that. They don't want to have a wedding there, they don't have to have a wedding there, so we just cross out five. And then I think six belongs in a new section, which you might label D, additional requirements. So you say no principal structure should be erected except where required for those things. And I also believe that what you have is B two under applicability that maintains existing footprints, that that actually belongs with this additional requirements instead of the applicability thing. So it's just a like a construction thing there. And then the administration goes away for taking away from the planning board because it's just, you know, trying to be existing under zoning. And the effective date thing is good, that's, that's fine. So you need to, you know, just massage the words a little bit, you know, to say, you know, under C, a qualifying building may be converted to up to how many dwelling units, you know, and, but it would, and then it's just subject to these conditions. So it just makes it, I think it's more fair and I would hope that it gives you a greater chance of.
And clear.
Well, hopefully it appeals to more people if it's not going to have an administrative burden and, you know, if it's not just those four properties.
Sure.
So it could be like Nancy Brandon's house. But anyway, those are kind of my, my.
But it has to be an inn as of January first.
No.
No, I would take out that whole, that number one under B. Because that would be considered spot zoning because there are only four inns in town and their neighbors can't do the same thing. So you're saying this property, this property, and this property can do this, but nobody else can.
Gotcha.
And so that would be.
We want to stay away from that.
Yes, that would be considered illegal. The other issue on B, the B two, maintaining the building footprint, six-year architecture characters to the greatest extent practicable, kind of subjective and who decides that?
I think the planning board says you can't go outside this footprint.
Well, that's, that should be clear that it's.
Is that, or there's no, I don't know who does that.
Well, it's zoning.
It would be zoning, but.
So we don't need to add that?
Yeah, well, I think, you know, whatever would be allowed under the zoning. I understand what you're saying is, but the, when you say the greatest extent practicable, I'm going to pick on you, Rich, just to, and I'm going to exaggerate things. So let's say Rich decides he wants to use the barn Lockline Lodge, put twenty-four units in it, but he knows that he can only fit ten inside. So to him, it's practical to expand that. But is it, and this is, you know, to the greatest extent practicable, well, you know, who makes that decision? If it's somebody who wants to enlarge a building, they say, well, it's practical for me to add those extra units, so I can do that. So I think that section.
Delete that?
I would delete that. And, you know, the, the basic zoning, the dimensional controls for a lot will describe what they can and can't do. So if there is a more room that they can expand, then I think, you know, that the building could be expanded. It, my question really is though, if you're saying this is going to be done in a existing building.
Right.
You know, let's say you have, you know, a small two-bedroom house. It's, fits the any building. And how big do you want that building to be allowed to fit those twenty-four units? So there needs to be some way, you know, this just, to me, is very open.
Okay.
And could have unintended consequences that you're trying, people trying to expand existing buildings way bigger than they would normally be allowed.
So I wonder if, if it makes sense simply to strike that whole sentence and have it agreed that if you can make a bigger building, you can make a bigger building.
Yeah, don't hobble yourself.
Right.
Right.
Don't restrict it unnecessarily.
So just leave maintain existing building footprint?
No.
Don't even do that?
No.
Because that's restricting yourself because you might be able to put a bigger footprint on that lot.
Okay.
And that's the same thing about number six in C is why would you not allow yourself to put in another building if the lot coverage was allow, would allow it?
Right.
Yep.
Okay, strike that.
Yep, and, you know, and the other thing is, I'm thinking back, I really glad you brought that up, but I was looking back because we did develop a senior housing amendment which allowed there to be waivers of the things like footprint lot coverage and so that the planning board could allow things to be greater than they, than the zoning would allow. So it would give you even more leniency, but for now, I think what we want to do is get this concept through and if we find that we want to have dimensional controls be expanded for these types of situations with planning board approval, that we consider it, because we do have that language drafted from our old work on senior housing. But for now, let's just keep it to this to try to get that additional density in two or three districts.
So if what I think happens, which I don't know anything, but what I think is somehow we tweak all this, make it correct, present it to you guys for your next meeting and then it gets accepted and passed on to the town meeting in April, May, March? Is that how that works?
You don't even have to have our approval.
So if, when you submit it to the town, it is going to be on the warrant?
If we have enough signatures.
If you have enough signatures.
But you're gonna, but what you're giving us tonight is good feedback.
Does that have to be by December ninth?
I think so.
Yeah. Our, our next meeting isn't until the eleventh.
Right, but it has to be submitted by December ninth.
Once you do it on the ninth, that's it.
Right, right, right.
We can't do it again.
Yeah, so that was tonight to see if you can help me massage this and then get it back to you and then.
That sounds like it's early.
I think it's in January.
That's the first, is that the first or the end date?
I think that's the end date because it's usually.
It's a hundred and twenty and.
Yeah, it's the, I'd have to look up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it, it seems, they seem reasonable because it's normally ended as November through early December.
Okay, so.
But then the board doesn't have to hold the hearing until January.
Oh, so December eleventh, you have time to.
No, once you submit it on December ninth.
You'll have to.
And you'll submit that to the town, you know, it actually goes to the select board, which goes to Deena. And she'll give it to me, I'll give it back to the planning board.
Okay.
Or you give it to me and I'll give it to the select board and it will get through to them.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is there anybody in the planning board that feels as though they would like to present, massage this and have it go forward as a planning board proposed amendment?
No.
No, okay. I just, because I, then we wouldn't have to get the petition, so we'd have a little more time to fill with it. That, but, because I would be willing to entertain that, but if we're going to have a petitioned amendment that comes in and addresses the same thing, then, and nobody else is in support, then I don't want to go there.
Okay.
So Liz, I would say, my opinion is that you really should not include the rural district because I don't think it would get passed. So I would strongly suggest that you don't, you have it in the rural district. Because that would mean it would open up the whole rural district and people aren't going to vote for it.
Well, think about what it is though, it's existing building.
Yeah, but you can make it bigger. Any existing building in the rural district.
You can make it as big as the zoning allowance.
Right, right.
So nice people aren't going to vote, I mean, it's ice cream.
I guess our vision was, we didn't want it rural because we want people to be able to walk to the post office, walk to the library, walk to the grocery store, walk to Stella's. So if you're out up on Breck Hill, that, nobody's going to walk to that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I feel the same way as you do. I mean, I live downtown, so I love.
It's kind of fun.
Yeah, it's, well, it's nice to be able to walk.
And more.
I think the Lime Common district is great and I think probably the commercial, but.
Makes sense.
I would go with that.
Just edit and remove it rural, that's fine.
Well, I was just thinking of big barns like Teller's Bar and some of the other ones that could be converted into multiple.
Well, that may be, that may be a good point, but I guess the way they're being encouraged to write it, you could, you could add on to any building as long as you had dimensional controls and I think that there's strong resistance to that possibility.
So I will say, the line ordinance does have a special provision for properties on state roads. It's on the lot size, three acres versus five acres, but if you have parcels within a thousand feet, the line ordinance already has that specific characterization. I do think it's, the ordinance treats it special. I do think that in fact, the keeping it on a state road makes it interesting even if it's in the rural district. So.
I'm not, I'm not understanding what you're trying to say.
He's saying we should include the rural district.
I think, I think you can say rural district within a thousand feet of Route Ten.
But you already, like, you presented that before and got voted down, so. Let's try, let's try to get this thing in, in these more limited areas and.
Yeah, I don't think it would pass.
Promote that idea.
If you go to the rural district, it's not going to pass.
More units. I, I think the rural district isn't going to work and maybe if everybody loves that, then go to the rural, or maybe go to Route Ten, but I don't think it's going to pass if it goes rural.
I, I would support the removing the age restriction. Because, I mean, when I was fifty-five, my daughter was thirteen, because could she live with me?
Right, 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 so.
And if you want to have a support person.
I think the other problem with the age restriction, and David, you may know more, but the state law that was passed, if we have a senior housing ordinance in town, that has to apply to every, everywhere in town.
No, it, well, it applies to affordable housing.
Affordable, well, you have to make it affordable, it could be anywhere in town.
But yes, anywhere.
And that's not going to, that's not going to work at all.
Anytime, if you say senior housing, age fifty, anytime you put something like that in, the state law requires that you apply those same benefits to any type of affordable housing, anywhere in town.
So somebody could buy something in East Lime and build a twenty, whatever.
You put twenty-four apartments out near reservoir pond.
So that's not going to apply at all either.
So not specifically saying, oh, sorry. Were you going to say something? Oh, not specifically saying age fifty-five or senior housing, but it is up to the owners to decide who can apply. Or.
Yes.
And the ordinance doesn't have to call that out.
Right.
It can be just a covenant.
Okay, but I hear what you're saying, Evie, and I know that, I worked for Senior Solutions down in Springfield, Vermont, and there are many seniors that need a caretaker that are not fifty, I totally hear what you're saying, I get it. Okay, thank you.
The other thing I was going to say, this is a little different, but just to try to help you guys out, I don't, I don't know how much you've looked into this, but when you, there's certain, certain state requirements when you convert an older building. Like Ray Clark, I don't know if you knew what happened with him.
He's been in this with us and he saw a building yesterday and almost passed out, yeah.
Yeah, well, see, the problem, he couldn't do what he wanted to do. He had to tear down the L on that house and build a whole new building in the back because he couldn't meet the state requirements. Would some of those meaning, mean that the walls had to be attached to the foundation, their ceiling heights, they were going to make and replace all the rafters? So just make sure you know what's going on with the building.
Oh, yeah, there's no sprinkler system.
Right.
The inside and the outside of the, I mean, we know it will be millions of dollars to make it.
Yeah, I mean, to make it comply.
So did you all buy your Mega Bucks ticket tonight? No, I absolutely understand what you're talking about.
You know, and then septic, you're changing the use, so I, I don't know, I'm not a realist.
So twenty fifteen, they told us, we, we got to get proof of all of this, but in twenty fifteen, they put in a septic system and a water well that accommodates two hundred people, three hundred sixty-five days a year. But that's a totally different use, you're right.
Right, so, because I would, I would think the state would say, well, if you have people living there full-time, they're going to use more water than people that are just there overnight.
For, yeah.
So you might have to, you'd have to check this whole septic system, which may be an issue.
Okay.
It's something else to think about.
So I want to be sure that when you are talking about independent living units, that you know that each unit then has a kitchen and a bathroom and a, you know, bedroom. And it's not just that they have their own bathroom and no kitchen, but that each of those units would need to be, you know, an independent building.
Subsufficient.
Yeah. So somebody you have in mind or do you have a more?
Well, yeah, we were, we were brainstorming yesterday and, huh huh huh. It was frightening because the ideas were just all over the place, which is great, but one of the pieces was, yes, everybody needs to be efficient in their own units, but we don't want stoves and things that could be left on by mistake, so either, oh, not air fryers, I can't remember what they were, but microwaves, and then a fully operational kitchen downstairs that they're catered to, so breakfast is included, dinner is included, cocktail hour is a must.
Yeah, obviously, we can't.
But we just, we're just trying to get this first little piece before we figure out if we can even go anywhere.
Well, what you're, you're talking about though is that each of those units would be standalone and not necessarily dependent on getting a meal.
Correct, yeah.
So, because I didn't want you, because, you know, it could be what you're thinking of is more of a rooming house where people have a place, probably a place to sleep and then there's common area and that, okay, no. So independent units, okay.
So, so I don't, I don't understand, I think you two are talking about different things. She's talking about not having kitchens and you're talking about having.
No.
She's saying having a kitchen.
Kitchenette, not a full kitchen.
It's, you're not going to burn your, it's like they're not going to have a gas stove, they might have an induction stove top, you know, a two-wheeler
Yeah.
or something like that, that they can cook, but it's not going to be with flame where they could burn the house, the building down. I mean, I don't know how many times you've like, you know.
Oh, no, I understand, but I, I mean, whether it's gas or it's electric, you can still burn, burn the house down.
Induction is hard to burn down, but anyway, but.
We haven't gotten that far, but we just know that, yeah, they're independent units.
Right, okay, I just, because that's what it says here and I want to be sure you understand that means they have their own bathroom, their own kitchen.
Correct.
And, yeah, okay.
And Liz, the other thing I would throw out is, when you go through all this and you determine that, well, you really can't fit twenty-four of these in the Downs, and let's say you could only fit twenty or whatever, you might want to lower the number just to make it easier to pass.
Well, I wondered, I wondered about that, we were going to ask for fifteen from six.
Yeah.
And then somebody said, but if you don't ask for the moon, how are you going to get what you need instead? I don't think we're going to do more than fifteen, you're absolutely correct.
Yeah, so you might want to lower, on the, on the amendment, you might want to make it less than twenty-four, just to make it a little easier. I think it might be easier to pass.
I think that's a good point.
Thank you.
And, and I wanted to get a clarification, Vicki, I think I heard you say not to have any age restriction at all, not calling it senior housing.
Right.
And, and I certainly agree, I just wanted to get that clarification.
Yeah, that's, that's what I feel.
And then, and then if the owner of the building wishes to declare it fifty-five, whatever, or that, that's their prerogative, but it has nothing to do with the zoning.
Right, right. The zoning allows a building that's shaped like what the zoning allows and then in these two districts or three districts, you can convert an existing building into more units.
Thank you.
That's just.
Okay, two more things just to, under C.
Did I hit that?
Under C one, condition use permit issued by the planning board under section four six four. Section four six four refers to agricultural soils.
Whoops.
So, and I don't believe that it actually, there is a section that has.
Conditionally used?
Yeah, I'm not.
So I don't need to add that?
Initially is permit issued by the planning board, period.
Yeah, I think that would be the, just period after the planning board to get rid of the rest of it.
Use permit issued by the planning board?
Yep.
No section, gotcha.
Yeah, and then site plan review under Article eleven, site plan review is Article twelve.
Okay.
But you, I don't think you even need to say that.
Do I need that?
Site plan review approval, period.
Yeah, I think just site plan, get rid of the.
Site plan approval, got it.
And I always have issues with anytime you reference a state statute, because statutes change. And, so if this, if they delete six seventy-four or change the wording of it.
Then we're stuck.
Right, so I would just, I would strike that, I don't think it's.
Thank you.
And if you, because you're going to get rid of, hopefully get rid of the administration, then you would also get rid of the.
I say three fifty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, D should just go away because the planning board does not want to do it.
Right.
It should be administered like all the zoning is, or zoning administrator. Without placing an additional burden, so without the age thing, it's not really an additional burden. It just needs to be reviewed to make sure it conforms with the zoning sizes and, and then this is just an allowed, you know, increased density.
Yeah, and it's subject to site plan review, which then, you know, the board's going to look at, you know, all the, the site to make sure that the site is appropriate, that you're not. Yeah, and it's subject to site plan review, which then, the board's going to look at, you know, all the, the site, to make sure that the site is appropriate, that you're not saying, we're gonna put. Building from one property line to the other and have no space for parking, no access and.
Right. Fire chunks.
Right.
So, yeah, this was our first stab trying to understand the world of all this, so I appreciate your patience and your assistance. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Going forward, if they rewrite it, is there a chance to get another review in before it goes to, gets petitioned?
The board gonna have another meeting before then?
We're gonna, we, we talked about having a special meeting to do tabulations or something, when was that? That was in the minutes, so, let's just see. Didn't, 'cause I, I took those minutes when, I think we said, oh, we're gonna need some other time to tabulate. The board will meet Thursday, November twentieth to begin tabulating, is that a normal meeting?
No, that's, Thursday, November twentieth is a zoning board meeting.
Well, we said we were gonna do that.
Right.
So.
And we also changed the survey to say, get your answers in by.
I had the twenty-third, I think.
What, it says twenty-fifth, yeah.
Twenty-fifth.
Okay, well, I mean, the question is, are, are we gonna do that, and couldn't we tabulate what we have on that date and then also see their revised thing? So I'm just trying to.
Interesting, just give me a time and date so I can notice it.
I, I frankly don't wanna do that, I think it's premature for us to do that.
Okay. Okay. Do you think it's gonna take more than one meeting to tabulate all the paper ones? Do you, do you know how many?
Do we have to do that as part of a meeting?
Well, if it's more than a forum of the planning board, yeah.
More than two people, yeah.
Sorry. Do we need to have a, a planning board meeting in order to do data entry on paper ballots, paper surveys?
If, if there are more than two members present, yes, it has to be a noticed.
Can we do it by ourselves on our, at my desk at home?
That's up to the board, I haven't talked about that.
Yeah, I think we oughta do it in a public meeting.
Do the data entry?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I, I'm just saying, we, we put that in the minutes, 'cause I remember writing it, but I wondered if we were gonna meet that day, couldn't we see what they come up with again before? But that's, if nobody wants to meet, I mean, I, I'd be willing, I mean, I, I have it on.
This is, I, I can, the zoning board adjustment meets, and so, you know, the room is taken.
Right.
And so you'd have to find another space, and I will not be available.
That's okay. You can take minutes, but.
No, I guess, I.
Yeah, yeah.
'Cause our regular meeting is the eleventh of December, right? Our next regular meeting.
I was going under the impression that we're still gonna tabulate and work on the twentieth, but that's fine.
But I just, we're a regular meeting, yeah.
Yes, the eleventh.
And then.
But we can email this changes to you, Dave, and you circulate this to me.
I can absolutely, and if board members give me individual feedback, I can.
Let's do that, just so that we can not be surprised on the eleventh. Like, ah, I didn't think of that.
So, David, will we have a, a hearing on this on the eleventh?
No.
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 So we will be after that sometime.
Right, it, once it's submitted to the select board, then the, the planning board has to have a public hearing. And the, the board will vote whether they agree or disagree with it.
Correct.
And that's it, and then when it goes on the warrant, it'll go on the warrant as you submitted it, there will be no changes after you submit it. And then it will state that the board agrees with it or disagrees with it.
And then the town votes in March.
And then the town votes in March.
Then it's on time, but when will we have that hearing?
Early in December.
So either the eleventh or the.
Would, or, okay, January.
Oh, January, okay, okay, so we wouldn't have to have it till January, okay.
Well, they, they have to have it in.
By the ninth.
By the ninth.
But then we don't have to do it until.
Right, you don't have to do it until January.
Great. You have many other things to do, are you all set with us?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much.
No, no, thanks for getting this meeting on.
Thanks for your time, but done.
Okay.
That's cool.
Before we get to. To Lauren, we have a, a public hearing on curb cut regulations.
Is it around five percent of his area?
We have, we worked on these over the summer, right?
Yes.
I guess we had a couple of changes, and then we never actually had the public hearing to.
I was just, I was trying to catch up on everything, got busy with the survey, and, yes.
I think, yeah, the main change is on page four, number six.
Yeah, if you look at the, at the very, and I, I put the, the final page, I just put the current language in the proposed language.
Yeah. Can we decide what negative three percent or greater means?
I thought about it again when I read it, and it's just like, well, it couldn't be less, because that would be, that would make it.
Steeper.
Yeah, it would make it, it wouldn't be consistent with what the purpose is, no.
It's just, it's just gonna be misinterpreted by everybody who reads, or fifty percent of people who read.
Right, well, I, I thought about changing it to less, and I said, well, less doesn't make sense.
How about if we just say it shall be three percent, and then there's no.
Well, then you're gonna have to make it exactly three percent.
We're gonna have to make it three percent, but I mean, it's two point seven, three percent, I suspect it is.
Do, do we wanna say three percent or steeper?
Yeah, because, you don't wanna have it three percent, 'cause then what if the driveway goes away from the road like this?
Well, it, right now, it has to be three percent.
Or.
Well, you, if it.
Or even steeper than that.
If it drops off, you still want it to be at that three percent.
You want a landing pad that's relatively flat.
Right, exactly, so you come up and have a place to stop and check traffic before trying to get up into the road.
Right. The length of a car, the length of a car, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
So, I'd suggest we just leave it at three percent, then we don't have the, this whole issue of. Well, is, is it negative two percent, or is it negative four percent that we're allowing, or can we actually have negative eight percent? Which we definitely don't want, because then we don't have a landing pad at the top.
You wanna say no steeper than three percent?
I think what Rich is saying is that we really want it to be negative three percent, you know, plus, you know, but. At, for a certain distance, because you, you get your vehicle up there, you're not riding the clutch and, and, and trying to just zoom it out there because.
Go on, I hope I don't get stuck, 'cause the snow's pretty steep.
Well, how about if you just said something?
How many people can drive a manual?
How about if you said something like, the curb cut shall fall away at a grade of fif-, of three percent or more? Well, but we don't say more.
For the first twenty feet.
You still, yeah, 'cause if you go more.
Three percent or more.
You don't wanna do that.
No, but, but you, but you, you've, you've changed the negative word into a sort of a visual. Down slope, and so now you can talk about the slope going down. But you don't really wanna. Which is also a grade, and it's graded at three percent going down, or more than three percent. Four percent, five percent, six percent. Well, but you don't want it, I don't think, more than three percent, really, because then the car, you know, we're saying the car needs to be on a fairly level spot. Years ago. So, what, what exactly then was it supposed to mean? Well, see, before, in the old. No, no, what is this supposed to mean? Three percent or greater.
Right, for the first twenty feet.
Yeah, well, that. No, but what is it, what is it supposed to mean? It means that it has to fall away at three percent grade, at least at three percent grade. Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, it has to fall away at, at least is three percent grade. So in other words, that changes the concept of the grade going forward.
So, we're, we're talking about two things here.
Right.
Yours, you're concerned with the word negative, which is a, a tad confusing. I think, I, let me see if I got this right, I think you're saying you're concerned that the word negative three percent is confusing, and if it sloped away from the road. Or sloped down from the road at three percent would be, would that satisfy your concern? And I think the.
At least three percent, yes.
Yes, and I think Tim's concern and others is that we wanna say, do it at three percent, not three, or five, or eight. Because eight percent, you're riding the clutch.
Well, then you could say three percent plus minus one percent.
And, and I think, I mean, I, I don't know how these things are written.
If that's what you want, if that's what you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't think you want plus, you don't want it two percent, you want it at least three percent.
Right, I mean, I don't.
See, the whole idea is to get the water not running on the road. Well, then you could say four percent plus minus one percent. Yeah.
What, what about, what about driveways that go up from?
We still need to have.
That's the whole point, see, the, the problem before was driveways that went up from the road, they didn't, they weren't required to have a negative slope away.
Yeah, and it just rushes into the road.
So the water would come down the driveway and wash the road, then Scott was having all kinds of problems, so that's why we wanted to change this, because.
So you're gonna make it go down first and then up?
Yes, if it has to, yeah.
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 Right, I don't know how these things are, I mean, is my excavator gonna look at four percent, you know, slope down, four percent plus or minus one percent? Is, or is he just gonna wanna say, want me to say, just do it three percent away from the road? I mean, I, I, I don't know what excavator, because that's what you wanna do, you wanna make it really clear, so the excavator knows rightly.
I think being concrete, saying three percent plus or minus one percent or whatever, and then, then the road agent would be the one to check.
Well, I was gonna say, Scott looks at it anyway, so, and it's, you know, all this is a little bit, but.
Sure, okay.
The main thing, we just wanted to get it in here that we didn't want the slope to be right down into the road.
Yeah, right.
You know, we just want it the other way, so, yeah.
I mean, if you look at the language that we have now, it's that, shall be no greater than five percent the first twenty feet, so.
And that's up, I think it'd be up.
Yep.
And, and that could be up, yeah.
That's what we were trying to avoid.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I'm at, I think Matt has a great idea of negative three percent, plus or minus one.
I'm actually staying, don't use negative, just say.
Right, say fall away.
Shall fall away from the road.
Shall, shall fall away from the road at a grade of four percent plus minus one percent. That would work.
Yeah.
Good.
For the first twenty feet, yeah.
Yep.
That's in there for the first twenty. The width, the length of a car. You do want the, you know, ideally, but when you come to the edge of the road, you don't wanna be, you know, like, the car like this. Because then it makes it harder to see who's coming and all that stuff, you wanna be somewhat, the car somewhat level. Because it'll be permanent. Well, don't we have the line of sight rules to satisfy also, so.
We're not changing those.
Yeah, right, so those are still in effect, and so. Right, but you still, you still have to be able to see from your, from forty-two inches, it's actually forty, forty-two inches high. Yeah, well, they've got, they've gotta solve that one in order to build it. Yeah.
Are we allowed to make changes at this hearing?
Nope. You're going to, you're gonna vote to approve this new language, and I shall.
Nope, okay, forget it.
Then.
I'm wondering if you're sure that, that Steve sees the, the language.
Scott.
Scott, sorry, Scott sees the language.
Steve is no longer with us.
Yeah, right, yeah, sorry, Steve, all right. Yes, but that he sees the language.
Yeah, I'll talk to him.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure he'll be, so that, what's that mean, David, we, we have to have another hearing?
Yes, because.
Can we still get it, we can still get it on town, town meeting?
No, you, you don't need to.
It doesn't have to go.
Oh, that's why.
Once you approve, this is a regulation, so it doesn't go to town meeting, only ordinance go to town meeting.
So we're all set.
So we're gonna do this again.
Yes, in January, not in January, the next meeting in December, I will schedule another hearing.
It's a dementia test, how's your long-term memory?
So if, if the board wants to vote to approve this language, I would appreciate it.
I have another question, though, on number eight, you have something in caps, placement length and diameter shall be approved by the road agent. Is that also new language?
It's in caps, it's in bold.
Bold. Yes.
Yeah, I can do it.
Yeah, I missed that, but.
And is that being changed to that section eight?
Yes.
That's a new sentence.
Yeah, okay.
So, you would like a, a motion to accept these changes?
A motion to. Yep.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
I move to accept this change.
And a second?
Second.
Vicki is seconding? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. So, we have something else to do in December.
But, it is good to get it right, 'cause this, what we do now, probably good for another ten or fifteen years, so.
Super.
It's worth getting it right, I guess.
Okay, can we, let's move on to Lauren and the driveway change. So, we have before us a driveway change, and Lauren, can you tell us why, why we need to change, or why you're looking to have a change?
The, the river turns, and it actually, the driveway was going in the shoreline protection district, and I didn't realize that until you mentioned it. It feels so far away, because you're up so high, but in plan view, it's actually closer to the river, so. That made us need a shoreline protection permit, and then for the shoreline protection permit, they do it by the radius, or the, the, basically the cross-section of trees in each twenty-foot section. And we only had one tree and several, so we, we were ineligible for a shoreline permit, because we couldn't cut down a tree, because it was the only tree in the section.
Yeah, we, we weren't clear on that exactly, so in other words, you, you're not allowed to put the driveway in the shoreline district.
Period, and there's no, there's no getting around that, then. There'd have to be some sort of special exception, and we thought, you know what? Just, it's a four thousand dollar permit to maybe be told, no, we can't do it anyway, so this is another perfectly viable solution, so that's the intent.
Okay. I mean, I guess I'm looking at it, and I see either what's existing or what you proposed as being superior to what you have now, but. Which is why I was wondering if, if it's possible for you to get a permit, and it's just maybe not convenient, but it almost feels to me like it would be. A better solution to, to go with the, the, the earlier design.
Yeah, it was certainly a, a design that seemed desirable, but given the constraints, it just may not even be possible.
So, another question I have, I'm just throwing these things out there, but the existing driveway is steep, obviously, and Aaron doesn't like it. Have you thought at all about any way to modify, just modify that so that it would work for, for the fire department?
We would, the.
I mean, it'd save you a ton of money and.
Tell me about it.
Yeah.
The well is in a spot near the top of the hill.
Right, so, yeah.
So you have to stay away from the well, and then it's just a, I mean, it's this.
It's a strange.
Rise overrun, so you have to give enough length to get the slope down, and so, there really are very few options. Plus you need to have a turning radius, you know, the center of the road has to be at least fifty, so we're, we're up to sixty-six feet of the center line of the road, so it gives plenty of turn. So, this got us down, got our slope down, we reduced, we eliminate very few trees. We don't go, we don't eliminate any of the parking, and it stays out of our convenient place for guests to have outdoor events, so. We made it work.
Yeah, so if you started, where the existing driveway is, it's steep, and if you, if you went to the left there, cross it, and a loop and down, that probably wouldn't help whatsoever. Yeah, so if you started with the existing driveway is, if you, if you went to the left there, cross it and a loop and down, that probably wouldn't help much, would it?
Well, we can't be any closer to the well than that, the existing, and then this electric, this line of electricity here makes it very difficult to do any cutting. So, if you look at it, we've got, we can't cut here because we have the electric line. You know, we can't, can't cut there because we have the electric line, we can't cut here because we have a water line. So, we're doing what we can in between the water line and the electric line to get down.
I was just thinking, if you start, start where the existing is and then go to the left.
Over here, this way?
Well, right where it starts.
That's the well.
Right, but then you could just go down a little ways and go to the left and make a loop there and then go back to the original.
So you see where the well is, it's really hard, here's the start of the existing driveway, and there's the well.
Right.
So they need to be seventy-five feet away from the well.
Right, but what if you just came in here and then went?
They're not seventy-five feet from the well, though. That's.
Oh, here it is.
Look, look, here's a scale, okay, so they've gotta be like about an inch.
Right, okay.
Yeah, it's a little less than an inch, so they need to be at this distance.
Right.
You know?
Okay, okay.
From, from the well.
Yeah.
So there's like, you know, if you drew a protective radius around that and then see what, you know, do.
Right.
It's not good.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to.
No, no, no.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So, are these radiuses, the curves, good for you, Aaron?
Yeah, I, we ran out to the truck manufacturer to just make sure that the numbers that I rec, that were in my mind and burned in, were actually correct in terms of our turning radiuses. And our worst truck right now is at thirty-two point something feet, so we're well within any radius that we'll have. I'm not, it would be extremely unlikely for us ever to bring a handover ladder truck or anything to the lower part of that driveway because our height just isn't in that range, but that would be tight, but I, I, I think they could do that given what I've seen them do in front of the fire station. So, again, it takes all the mutual aid apparatus that would typically be responding to that and then we'd be able to make the driveway.
And the eight percent grade is okay?
Eight percent is within, within what we're looking at.
Yeah, and Lauren, is that eight percent averaged over the whole driveway? Or are sections of it twelve percent and others, you know, five percent?
Our goal was to have it eight percent average, just keeping it eight percent the whole way.
Right, so are there, are there sections that are greater than eight percent?
We would just make it so it's all eight percent.
Right, because I think the zoning says it can't be more than eleven percent for any hundred feet.
Yeah.
Within any hundred, hundred-foot segment, so, but is there eighty percent everywhere in the pond?
So sheet six shows his finished contour lines, and you can see that they are all spaced evenly. So that, that means that it's a constant grade of solid lines, so, so. So he's correct, I, I, as long as he's got the slope right, which I think he probably does. And he builds it this way.
Right.
Then he'll be at a constant grade.
Okay, and the eight percent's good for you?
Yeah, we can, we can pump at eight percent. Above that is where it starts to get into problems, which is why the longer-run driveways have that flat spot to allow us to set a relay pump for a time there, so.
And you don't need any pull-offs on this?
It's less than a thousand feet?
It's, it's a short, I mean, we can, we'll be easily laying a single lay down in there, and frankly, I wouldn't wanna have a truck in the middle of that. We talked about a couple things in terms of turnaround space, expanding a little bit of the space there. And in comparison to the other plan, the one thing we liked about the plan where you went out back was it kind of forced the maintenance of that in, in a no parking spot for us to get apparatus in, so we talked about having that be signed to say no parking along that section or a fire zone to allow emergency access to the back of the building. So, those are two suggestions that we put forward based upon the plans.
The back of which building?
The big building.
So, basically saying no parking in this area so that they can.
I get it.
Hopefully.
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
So we moved, we moved those parking spots here. And now there's no parking ever else.
So, can you explain what the concrete thing is? Is that like a versablock wall?
Yeah, concrete slope protection, I always wanted to look at.
What is that?
I think you, you have it here, proposed concrete slope protection.
What is that? Yeah, it's on sheet four.
Right, it's this. It's down near the barn building.
Proposed concrete slope.
The first corner, so it ends up being sort of above the larger cottage and the septic.
This is what's way off.
Stretching up to the drive, the new drive, proposed drive.
If, if the slope is greater than we can keep that stabilized, then we would have to use concrete. I don't think it's going to be.
What does that mean, concrete?
I have to talk to the, I work with another engineer to do this, I can, I could find out more. I could find out more.
I mean, is it a, is it a ski slope in concrete, or is it a versablock terrace? Or not, because it does show, we, we have the, the sheet with the contour lines, it does show a couple of them there. And then, if, and then I was wondering, well, what's the impact of, that's concrete, it's impermeable, and all the water's gonna go down into the leach field, so what's the impact of the leach field?
Our, we want to see, it's hard to, I don't know exactly, that's a great question. The goal is if it's less than, if it's less, if it's a stable slope, then it's just gonna be grass. If we feel it's gonna be an unstable slope, then we'll have to use stone or concrete, but most likely it would be stone, but worst case, this was a worst-case scenario, hey, if we can't get what we need for the slope, then.
Would, would something like a retaining wall?
Yeah, it would be more like terraces, wouldn't that be terraced?
Well, see, he doesn't know and doesn't show here, and it does show that there's, there's some sort of, you know, if you look at the contour here, it looks like there's levels there that, you know, might suggest a terrace, even though I don't know. Like if you look on sheet six.
It's just slope down, and most likely it will be grass, but if we're having problems with erosion, we'll have to do something more drastic.
Cause you're gonna have a swale all along the driveway on the upper side, right, just some sort of a swale there.
That's right.
And hopefully it can be grass, you know?
It will be, yeah.
And hopefully there won't be so much water that it just runs all the way down through. I mean, it washes everything, but.
Yeah, there's almost no need for a culvert at the bottom because it, the, the swale along the side of the road.
Absorbs.
Absorbs the water.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I assume if the driveway's crowned, then the half, the water from half the driveway will probably be running into the swale.
It does show, it's just cross-section, so it is crowned.
Right.
It, it seems to me there should, that, that this detail should be, well, first of all, are we providing comments?
Yes, you're providing comments to the zoning board, adjustment for things that you feel that they should be.
For, for them to be able to grant a special exception.
Because it's deep, because he's going across steep slopes.
Right.
Well, is the, is the position of these buildings in this diagram correct? Because it, it didn't look like it when I was at the site. It looked like they actually, you know, the, the whole setup of the buildings relative to the snow, uh, storage area is different that you've drawn here than in real life. And I'm just wondering, is that gonna torpedo this if somebody notices it at the zoning? I don't think it affects the design, but the position of the buildings as well.
Cause I think, I think Lauren, the, from what I can see, what we see, the cottage and the bar, I used to call it the bar, the, the front of those two buildings are kind of lined up, you know, they're in the same plane, but here, it's way, way out of, way different. And there is, and this, there's no driveway or parking lot that goes to the north end of the barn there either.
There's a big, long parking lot behind the lower cottage, and here you've only got two spaces. So, it looks as though you put that, you drew the lower cottage, the lower, smaller cottage in that parking lot instead of where it actually is, which is backing up to that parking lot.
I'll, I'll confirm that. I thought it was correct, but I'll, I'll overlay it with some imagery.
I mean, I guess I could probably pull it up on the.
You're trying to pull it.
Oh, you're trying to pull it up?
For me, it, it, you've, you've identified yourself as the design-built contractor and said that you're a P E, yet you don't know what part of this stuff is and you haven't stamped it, so, I mean, I would take the P E off of this so you're not owning the, the engineering, if you, what I'm saying, it just.
Yeah, you see what I mean?
This.
See, the, those two buildings are actually.
So it's actually got the back of the building lined up.
The back of the building, you can draw a straight line, whereas if you look at, if you look at the, the map you've got. Where are we? I think it's right up there, isn't it? Yeah, those are the two buildings, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
See, they're.
Well, they're kind of offset.
Well, oh, no, but now look at the map, look at, see, look at how far they're offset on that. They're offset maybe by a foot or so there.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And they're both, well, they're a little bit skewed from parallel, but they're mostly parallel with the property line, if that property line is somewhat accurate.
Yeah, well, it may not affect your driveway thing, it just, we're just putting it out, you know, you might wanna kind of correct that maybe, just to make, and then, yeah, cause I think on this map, you have a, it looks like there's a driveway or parking lot right up against, right up against here, right? And there isn't anything there.
Oh, it's, yes, I understand what you're saying, it's actually the, the smaller building. The, the parking lot.
Right, but on this, you've got it.
The parking lot is right here.
Right, but right on this, on this map, it's right up against.
Yeah, it shows the doorway to the front of that building.
Yeah, I may just have that building too far down there.
Yeah, well, as I said, it may not, I mean, it just would be less accurate.
Somebody's, I mean, it, I thought a lot about it and I can't, actually, as long as you don't shift the position of the septic system and the septic tanks, of the upper one, then it won't interfere with what you've got. So, probably isn't gonna matter, but it's not accurate, yeah.
The parking for the red barno is in the corner, correct? I mean, that's in the corner, there's one lot space, I think, where you were talking to him, but I think the other parking spots are in the corner on his design. The new design has the parking spots. Inside that. Actually up on the curve, so that we didn't have to worry about the hill between the two. This is a hill, and it was causing some problems with, you know, how do you get all the way around so that you can come in? So we just put the parking here and then had a walkway.
People really gonna use that? Seems inconvenient, and that's not close to the building, but is that like the easiest way to get there?
I think so.
Yeah. And if you're carrying groceries and you're a car seat kid?
You know, it's, what, seventy feet away? Or people up top are walking, you know, a hundred and forty.
So, you say for, for, for the old driveway, proposed vegetation, what's that vegetation?
Grass.
So you just get rid of that, it'll just be gone.
Just grass, okay.
Scraped off the stone.
Cause it looks like when you say vegetation, other places you specified grass and, you know, I didn't know if it was gonna be a beautiful garden or, you know, line of trees, and the, this driveway.
So, I mean, I, I think when we're, when you were bringing up these questions, I mean, these are things that should be noted on the final plans submitted to the zoning board, I mean, the design currently doesn't stand up, I mean, he can do anything he wants unless it's detailed and we, and we require it, or maybe we don't care, I think it's a fifteen percent slope, so it should probably have a detail on how it's gonna be restored.
The current driveway is fifteen percent slope, so.
Right.
So are you gonna dig it up?
I, I thought we had, it was like, we, grass when we planted all of the disturbed areas, it completely ran off, where is it?
Well, you've got the, I mean, the disturbed areas, then I wanted to know, does the disturbed area count all the cut and fill areas?
Yes.
And then, it doesn't appear to go down as far as where you have the concrete shown. So, I mean, that's gonna be disturbed. You know, so this little development summary table is the total area of the lot, total disturbed area is all the cut and fill area.
The arrow seems to be right.
So what's the question?
Oh, sorry, so on sheet three, you've got a development summary table.
Okay.
And, so the total area is the total area of the lot.
The total, it was the watershed area, that area affected by, is that right?
I don't see, I don't know what it is, that's why I'm asking.
It's the sub-basin affected by the project area.
Okay, the sub-basin, so there's a sub watershed, so this is total area of sub watershed, sub watershed. And then total disturbed area is, is that?
Anything that was cut or filled.
And then including your, your concrete. The, the concrete goes further down toward the leach field than your cut or fill.
It won't be concrete, I forgot that was.
Well, whatever it is.
It's gonna be grass.
Okay, is that concrete area, is that included in your total disturbed area, or is it just?
Yes.
Yes.
Anything that's cut or filled.
Okay, so, so what is shaded on sheet seven? Is what you count as the total disturbed area on that second line that's due, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then the proposed driveway area is just the fifteen-foot travel surface?
Yes, well, the, the proposed driveway area.
Does that include the swale, or what, I don't really know what that.
I think that's, in the sub watershed, that's this area here that's the actual driveway, and then the proposed purview. I'll confirm.
If you could add more descriptive language, you've got plenty of room to make that a little, you know, wider table just to say what are you measuring, cause I have no idea.
Okay.
Oh, what, what that is, and how many sub watersheds are there that you were looking at?
We just wanted to know the water that would be affected by this roadway.
Right.
So, it was, if you drop a piece of water at any spot, if it would be affected, so it's just a sub watershed for the disturbed area.
So when you say proposed purview area, what does, what does that mean? That's a half an acre.
Well, I wonder if it's the concrete to start.
This is purview, I'll get clarification and I'll make that more clear.
Yeah. Okay, so. Both that table and then what is meant by the concrete would be good.
And hopefully you won't need, hopefully you won't need the concrete, so.
Right. Well, I, I mean, I, I would kind of challenge that, it looks, it looks to me like you're, you've got, you've got two, four, six, eight, ten feet of vertical coming together in. like ten or, ten or twenty feet. So, I mean, that's a, that's pretty steep.
Yeah, no, that's why I was wondering if it was going to be like a versa block terrace type of retaining wall. You know, that, it needs to be away from the leach field and there needs to be, you know, the leach field shouldn't be the receiving area for whatever comes off of that.
Yeah, and, and meanwhile, you're still maintaining a ditch along the side of the road, too.
So that's, will that swell be, that'll be integrated into the upper portion of whatever that concrete area is, right?
Yes, it's shown that way. He's got the swell and then beyond the swell.
So it won't be as though everything comes down there. So a lot of people bypass it.
Hopefully not.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it all depends what, if the ditches are kept, um,
I mean, I've, I've had a bunch of comments, uh, the, the section on the, the roadway section, that should be dimensioned. Um, the section, road section AA, so that you've got actual width called out. I, I'm curious.
Well, it should be at least fifteen feet, if that's what he's saying.
That's what he's saying, but I mean.
Yeah, yeah, but there should be a width.
All, all, it says the scale, it's not the scale and so, you know, I mean, which one takes place? The, the wooded area is not shown. To me, when I looked, went out and looked, it looked to me like all of these S-turns are, almost all of them are in the existing heavily wooded area.
No, only one of them, only the top one is.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, I think so.
I agree.
Well.
Because see here, the.
This, this whole thing here is in the wooded area.
No.
This is all open here.
That doesn't, that's not a good representation. That's an old image. The, there's a row of trees right here. There's a row of trees right here and that's it.
Uh-huh.
So this is all already, it's just grass. So it's just this row of trees.
You have a little mowed area that goes down from the upper parking lot down to the lower area.
Yes, uh-huh.
Isn't that where the road is going to start?
No, it starts up, uh, so.
So it starts closer towards the house?
So here's the house. That road goes down like this. So we're, we're farther that way. So this is the end of the parking lot. So it cruises, it cruises through this row of trees and then this is the grass and then it comes back to the road and then it stays in the grass. Here's the leach field, goes around the leach field and comes in. So this is all grass.
Okay. It ju, it just seems to me that, I mean, we're, we're talking about infringing on, in the steep zones area and, in order to cut those trees, they're, you know, they're decent sized trees and to stump them, you're going to have a lot of disturbed area. It just, I don't know, I mean, maybe the zoning board is going to be happy with this, maybe we're happy with this. I, I, I don't know. Yeah, I don't think this is a better image.
No.
It just feels like that should be shown. Our, our zoning ordinance talks about switchback grades not being more than five percent and this is eight. So is this again allowed or do we just look through the way?
CBA's.
Yeah, I'm not sure, um, I, I would think a, a switchback is a much steeper curve, but it's not defined in the zoning.
Right.
So I don't, you know, what, what, what's a switchback?
A switchback, a switchback is an immediate change of direction, which is what these are.
Okay, so I, you know.
I mean. Again, I.
You know, without the, a, a definition of a switchback, I, you know, in the zoning.
This is, if, if, if this is a switchback, it's a hundred and thirty-five foot wide switchback.
Well, a lot of roads have switchbacks that are a hundred and thirty-five feet because you need to have turning radiuses so that vehicles, you know, just trucks can get, you know, pickup trucks can get around, you know, that type of thing, so.
So, I, I don't know. Uh, it, it, it's a little frustrating.
Well.
I think, I think there should be an erosion control plan. The eight percent ditch, grass ditch, um, is pretty steep for, for a grass swale. Usually you see either stone line ditches at eight percent or at least some check dams. We talked about the restoration of driveway.
Um, the definition of switchback in North American English, it's a hundred and eighty-degree bend. It doesn't tell how wide it is.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I mean, we, we have.
This could be a switchback.
Two hundred and eighty-degree bends here.
Yep, yep, yep.
And it's, and we're still missing the details and dimension of the stormwater outlet at the bottom.
It's just, the, the culvert just empties into the rock and then it, I mean, it has this entire, it's totally flat and this is all grass, so.
But, but there should be a detail there. I mean, is it a two-foot by two-foot square of rock or is it an eight by ten or twenty by ten or?
The thought was it would just be enough to disperse the energy from any water coming out of the culvert. But the design flow has zero, it was just put in, there's, the design flow is zero because it's all absorbed down the grass soil.
Well.
I don't think that's, that, that does make sense.
No, in the, in the winter, it does not do that.
When the ground's frozen or.
All right, I, I'll put it, I'll put in a detail.
I mean, I, I, I think that it deserves to have a detail.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little unknown, obviously, until you have it built and see what happens in the first three-inch rain. Three inches in six hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to know exactly, but, you know.
Also, you know, you can't expect to have that swell actually be vegetated if we have a rainy season. I mean, the water just washes away the seed, so, I mean, there should be some, you know, some kind of tackifier to keep it there or, um, you know, some geotextile or something. I don't know how you're going to actually vegetate that swell like, so that it's an effective, um, energy dissipator for water scrolling down. Unless you put sod, I mean, and, uh, would require sod, but it'd be, I, I just don't know how a grass swale is going to happen.
So are you thinking about starting, doing this this fall, I mean, now?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I, I, I don't think it should be done this in the winter. I mean, I think we've missed our.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be easier not to, but, yeah.
I mean, we're, we're talking about construction in a steep slope that we don't allow construction in period, that we need to have a special exception. I think there's got to be some limitations put on this project.
Well, most of the time, you can't leave, you know, disturbed area, um, open, you know. There's limitations as to how much disturbed area you can have that's not stabilized, you know, overall with your season. And I don't think any of this would have, um, there'd be no vegetation and that's what you're relying on.
Yeah, because realistically, by the time you go through the ZBA, it'll be probably Christmas before you can start.
The ZBA looked at this, or looked at the old plan last month, but, um, you knew you were coming with a new plan, so they continued the hearing until next week, so they.
So they could look at it next week.
They're, the plan is to look at it next week.
Yeah. But anyway, it might almost be snow on the ground before you can start, so, whatever, yeah.
I mean, does the board want to ask the ZBA for a constraint that can't start until?
Would that be a problem, Aaron, for you? I mean, or would you rather start in the spring? I mean, it'd be easier to do in the spring. Is that, is that worth this as well?
I have the guy there with all of the excavation equipment and he's ready to go.
Yeah.
But, like he said, you know, there have, this, I care a lot about the environment. I, I don't want to cause erosion, you know, so.
Yeah, because you won't be able to get anything growing this, in the winter, till probably next April.
It's just a mess.
If I couldn't do it safely, I wouldn't do it. But if I could do it safely, then I'd do it.
A track vehicle, you know, assuming that's what you're using, this track vehicle on there? Not with tires and wheels, but it's got a track.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excavator.
So it's going to, you know, it tears up, I mean, that's what it's supposed to do, is tear up terrain.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if, if the intent is to build it over the winter, I, I don't know if it, there, there should be some best management practices that the state hears. I don't know. Are there any environmental rules that he has to comply with with the state?
It's going to be, he's out of the shoreline protection zone, so it's like, it's a hundred thousand square feet of disturbed area before you get to shoreline. I mean, it'd be before you get into, I mean, uh, site-specific.
I think so.
Yeah, and so this, his total disturbed area is not a hundred thousand square feet, so.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, unfortunately, realistically, if you did it this winter, you'd have it all torn up and then you wouldn't be able to grow anything till at least April. So you'd have the swales just dirt. And then if you, you know, then it's going to wash probably, which is unfortunate, you know. Like, I mean, you know, it's.
There's thirty thousand square.
Well, I mean, at that point, he needs erosion control mats and, and things like that. I mean, and, and none of that's detailed here.
Yeah, because if you got unlucky and had a big rainstorm at the end of March, it would be a mess.
Or even have at the end of November, the area of construction, so.
Yeah.
Would they start from the bottom and work up in doing the construction or you don't know? I mean, because even just the phasing, a lot of the stuff like this, you know, if you build from the bottom, it goes better.
I, I don't know. It, it, it seems like we're giving open-ended approval here and, um, again, we're building within our steep slopes area and it's not like it's a minor steep slope. I mean, it's fifteen percent.
Yeah.
Or better. So, I, I mean, I think if, if, I think there should be some limitations put on it and I'd suggest, you know, April first or something like that. Unless suitable erosion control measures are, are provided. And I'm not exactly sure what that would be, but I would think as a minimum, there'd be erosion control mats. There'd be check dams, temporary check dams along the, um, swale. And, uh, you know, probably somebody checking to make sure that it's holding on a.
Well, even on an eight percent slope, you can get some bad erosion just on the surface before it's stabilized with the sub-basin, you know, the driveway materials.
That's all I had.
I'm going to need you to send me your notes because you guys are kind of all over the place and trying to keep up with everything. So I just, I will need your notes just to write up.
Okay. Any other comments? So Aaron, you're good with this?
I, as long as I fit it in NFPA one, which he's under the eight perc, or ten percent. I mean, if he's meeting the guidelines from NFPA, I have no issue with it.
Yeah.
I looked up the Hanover Tower is a fifty-five-foot outside wheel turning radius, so that also puts it within the range of the corners, but.
That's, that's what we wanted, so that's great.
To be frank, yeah, to be frank, like, the amount of guidance that they give on where to put a smoke detector far exceeds what they do in what driveway design should be. So when I request information, it comes back in very interesting ways. So they've looked at the plans. Yeah. As long as we're within the zoning ordinance and we can fit, uh, the grade elements are at play and we have the room to turn around at the bottom, um, I like pretty much every plan better than the one that's existing right now.
Okay.
So, so to be clear, we're not saying, Lauren, that he has to stop wait till April.
It's a recommendation to the zoning board and the zoning board can, will make that final.
Okay. So it may be up to you. You may, you may find that it would be even cheaper to not have to do all that stuff this winter, you know. I mean, I don't know. Who knows, you know? We're supposed to get a lot of snow this winter, supposedly more than last winter.
Seriously?
Yeah.
So that's like, what, two feet of snow? Because we got crap last night.
Yeah.
It was pretty good coverage.
Anyway, yeah.
I, 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 a lot, a lot of speed days, so.
So is there anything else? Can we move on?
No, I think that's, I will get this, it'll take me a day or two to get this all written up.
I actually like this better. It keeps it more compact and, uh, a little better.
Well, it's a long way to go.
I think it's a long way to go.
The old.
Yeah. The old, the old one was closer to the river and in the river district, the wet one.
Right, so it's pretty far from the river.
Protected shoreline.
There's a whole field there.
Thank you, Aaron.
Yeah, appreciate it.
See ya. Next week.
So, uh, we've got minutes to go through.
The Rich's amendment, too.
Yep, that's at the, at the, at the end of the, or at the, after the minutes.
So, uh, October ninth minutes that were in the package that David gave us. Did anybody see anything that needed, that they took exception to? I didn't see.
I can't.
I can't.
Yeah. Do we have a motion to accept that, over nine minutes?
Yeah, I wrote it, so.
The best, the best one you ever.
The best story you ever wrote.
And a second by Tim. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay, October fifteenth minutes.
I just had one typo. I think on the last paragraph there, feedback on the survey question, it just needs to be an and.
Feedback on, and, yep. Do we have a motion to accept those?
I saw, I'll say.
Nat, second by Tim. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, we're good on this.
I was absent, so I'm going to abstain.
With one extension from the beginning. October twenty-third, I have a change. The Fishers should be capitalized. On the, right under, the third line down under item one.
Oh, the Fishers, yeah, they're not.
The Fishers wish to subdivide and then the next sentence.
Oh, the Fishers, yeah.
I don't know, is that a, is there a apostrophe S or is it?
No.
No?
No, there's two people, so.
It's just, well. I had, just down.
Then it happens again in the next sentence.
Yep.
Down, sort of a little more than halfway down, items to be added to, should that be items, items to be added to the conservation this remember?
Yes.
Okay.
That's fine.
I wasn't totally sure. And then, what else? Oh, the la, the very end. Rich made note, this little meeting October twenty-third and discussing.
Oh, I.
Funding.
Yeah, sorry about that. I, I completely, I got it half-written and. This, this is a problem with working in, where you can't sit down and do, you know, all of a sudden the phone rings or somebody comes in and you get up and walk away and you think you've.
Right.
So discussing the funding. So discussing the funding for
The housing survey.
The housing survey copy cost, copying cost.
And postage.
Well, no, the postage he was good on. He didn't need that.
They're gonna take it out of my, everything out of my budget anyway, so.
Yeah.
Anything that I have left over is gone to the, the planning board and.
Great.
Well, that's good. It shows that you're, you're accurate and spending it wisely.
Well, it's actually gonna show over, that I went over budget, but.
Does the ZBA spend one?
No.
Just that you got no money?
Oh, they do. They have, uh, I pay the dare mulligan a hundred bucks a meeting to do the minutes and all the decisions.
Really?
Yes.
But what about, uh, legal stuff? Do they ever have legal stuff?
If there's legal stuff, then it comes out of the select board's budget.
Okay. So all legal stuff, even our legal stuff comes out of the?
Yeah.
So, uh, do we have a motion to accept the minutes as revised? Tim and Vicki, second?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, none. So we now have, uh, minutes that are good.
Caught up.
Caught up. So, final thing on our agenda is this shoreline protection or shoreline zoning amendment.
Rich, I have, uh, I had sent David a note, apparently the day after. I couldn't be at the, the meeting when, how many times you discussed this, I sent David proposed wording, um, that was simplified and puts all the responsibility in the hands of the fire department. I understood. I went back and listened to the, to the public hearing and I understood Mike Hinsley to say that, um, he had very clear guidelines about what's, what's necessary.
Yeah, I think you're right. I remember that, yeah.
And so, um, you know, and it's also pointed to David, uh, that's sort of what David said, that, uh, I think I'm gonna propose that we say that, um, we leave it in the hands of the fire chief. Where the fire department, I'm not quite sure the right person to identify there. But that, um, to, to change the language, just to say, to change the shoreline conservation district of the Limes zoning ordinance, to add section B seven, propane and natural gas tanks are permitted after, uh, after review by the fire department. Which is the place where you, where that language was added in that, in that meeting.
It's permitted as special exception, not just permitted.
This is the special exception.
Section.
Section. Section B seven is a list of special exceptions.
Right.
And so, uh, it's just to say to add section B seven, that it will be permitted after review by the fire department.
Period?
Period. Right. And, and I think if the fire department determined that they need an engineer to weigh in on whatever, to give them sufficient information to make a judgment. But I understood, um.
Well, I, I don't think it's the fire department one. I think it needs to be the fire chief. Does the, what does that mean, a majority of the fire department, or? You know, I think you need to identify an individual, okay?
I mean, and, and I was not clear on that language, which is why I'm proposing it to this group. And that, uh, and, I mean, I'm looking at the, so, um, yes, I would say, uh, by the fire chief. And then the second piece is it also modifies section C two to say, which is the, the part about no buried tanks. Except as permitted in B seven, no underground fuel storage tanks are permitted.
Well, you also need to modify C one, because that talks about storage of toxic substances, so it's, you need to say, except as permitted in B seven for that usual provision. Because it says no use which utilizes stores or, you know, uses toxic substance is, is permitted. You need to say except for this B seven. You've already done, you've done the exact exception here.
Right.
No underground fuel storage tanks, other than those for propane are permitted. This one needs to say except for, you know, the use is permitted in B seven, or except for underground propane tanks, no use. So you need to do it for both, right?
What's wrong, what's wrong with the language in C? I don't understand what's wrong with that.
Well, he's added, um, other than propane tanks for two, but you also need to do it for one. Because propane's a toxic substance.
Vicki, suppose I simply, I adopted the language that's, uh, in, in the modified sheet here, the C one and C two.
Yep.
That language that, um, says no underground fuel tanks, other than propane are permitted, that's.
Right. So that you conform with, but what about one? I mean, it conflicts with one. So additional provisions are, there are two additional provisions, and so you need to put the exemption also up here in one.
I see. Okay.
So, except for, um, underground fuel propane storage tanks, no use which utilizes stores or processes, you know, that, so.
So one, we're just saying except for underground propane.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. 'Cause you can, you can never be able to conform with C one and it always gets denied. Yeah, so you need it in both.
Okay.
And I think the language should be no underground fuel storage tanks, other than those for propane.
Okay.
So, uh, it should be not, other than propane, other than those for propane, as you're referring to the.
So do, do, does protic- propane pose a threat to surface or groundwater quality?
It's not, you don't, would you eat it?
No, that the whole point of, of, of the fact that propane is allowed in most jurisdictions is that it doesn't pose a threat.
It's, it's toxic. I mean, you don't eat it. You can't, it can kill you if you smell it.
Yeah, but I'm not sure it's soluble in the water. I guess that, that would be my point if you wanted to get technical about it.
Okay, well, I, I consider it a toxic substance. I mean, I don't know. We can argue that.
Putting it in there just clarifies everything and says, oh, okay, the board is saying propane tanks get excluded from both of these, or underground storage tanks.
For propane.
For propane, get excluded from both of those and there's no question about who believes what's the toxicity of it.
Well, you don't want them floating, floating away and then.
Well, but that's.
But that's not.
Fire department's gonna say.
I disagree with you, Aaron Rich, on that, and I disagree very strongly.
Okay.
Because if our department's going to be looking at NFPA regulations, and I do not believe, unless you can tell me differently, that the NFPA regulations, um, talk about floodproofing propane tanks. They're going to talk about, um, dealing with, uh, the flammability issues, not the issues of them floating away. That's a floodplain, um, issue that you will find dealt with by FEMA.
So you think the fire department?
I don't think the fire department is gonna even think about it.
Fire department doing engineering design.
No.
I think that the certified professional is, is key, key there, because, because otherwise you wind up with. Otherwise you wind up with having to trust the fact that the future fire chiefs are sufficiently trained to, to know what the issues are.
Yeah, it puts a lot.
I mean, I think it's fine to have them, have it submitted to them and approved, but I think, I think it, it should have.
Part two is important.
Yeah, it, it should have a, a qualified professional designing it.
Yeah, this, this, that you're asking for, a special exception in an area that, you know, has some special considerations.
Special consideration. Okay, I agree.
The consideration, one of the considerations is going to be, is this thing going to all of a sudden pop up to the surface because of surface water?
So, I, I am fairly certain that I remember, and I, but I, we could go back and review the game films. I'm fairly certain that Mike Hinsley said.
I, I don't care what Mike Hinsley said. I'm talking about, you know, from my point of view. I wanna see a professional look at the soil and say, okay, it's above the high water table, it's good to go. No, it's not above the high water table, then we need to have a, it designed so that it's not going to pop up to the surface.
So, so who, who, what kind of professional is a licensed propane installer good enough?
No, I wanna see a, somebody who can look at the soil and say, here is your high water table. Or look at the, a, you know, at the bottom of where the, the propane tank is going to be placed and say, I do not see, you know, the high water table here.
Right, 'cause I think.
And that, you know, septic designer is, you know, has the, the qualifications to do so. Uh, doesn't have to be a, a certified soil scientist that's going to cost.
Yeah, but I don't know, like, say Simple Energy came out to install a tank. I'm not sure they would know where the high water can.
Would never.
Well, so.
They're going to install it the easiest and the most economical way for them. They're not going to look this way. I get submitted paperwork saying, I have had somebody look at this and it is good to go.
Somebody other than the.
Right, I, you know, propane, the guys who are installing the propane tanks, they know how to install that tank, how to get it, you know, put it in place, they know how to do the connections. They know nothing about flotation. And, you know, I, I run into this in the flood zone, that people all of a sudden put in propane heat and I see new propane tanks, I said, did you tie them down? Well, no. And these are in obvious flood zones and the propane companies have no clue. They, they are not going to, relying on the propane companies is not going to get.
So do we have to, do we have to define qualified professional? I mean, somebody might think the propane company is a qualified professional.
But they're certifying the high water table.
Right, so.
That would be very funny for a propane professional to be looking at soil changes.
True.
I mean, I think we've got a, a few things that factor in here. One, first, we wanna tell them that it has to be designed and properly anchored to prevent flotation. The second is that, um, it, it needs to be designed by an engineer or other qualified professional. And the elevation of the high water table has to be included in the design application. I'm thinking also that maybe in lieu of determining the seasonal high water table, the tank installation could be designed, assuming the ground surface elevation to be the seasonal high water table. So if you don't wanna pay to have somebody, um, come and just determine that it's two feet underground as opposed to, you know, three feet or right at the surface, I mean, all they're gonna do is probably put a little bit more concrete in. And it's probably, at some point, diminishing returns to have somebody come out and, and dig a test pit to determine high water table, if they just assume high water table is at the, at the surface.
I mean, I'm certainly willing to have somebody, you know, if, but I'm not thrilled by the opportunity, but if somebody's, if, if somebody said, Rich, you gotta put a, I actually don't even know if there's a weight there, an anchor.
Yeah.
But if somebody said, just put the anchor there, that would be fine. I'm just saying, do we need to have all of these things happen? Um, and, and is there a simplification that says, maybe we're, we're suggesting, uh, that says, Donald, why don't you just put a weight on this? Would that?
Yeah, I mean, that.
I'm not sure what language to propose there.
So, but you're.
Well, I have some language if you guys want it.
You're questioning whether we need under seven, one, two, or three, or you're just saying we wanna change that.
So, my proposal is just to say that the fire department needs to sign off, because I understood Mike Hinsley in the public hearing to say, he has a rulebook. And his rulebook deals with flotation, it deals with all these things, and if it's two feet from the water, that's different rules. And, and so.
But I think David was saying that the fire department may go by, what rules did you say?
I don't know, and I don't know this for a fact, but, you know, we don't have any testimony from the fire department to say different, that, um, I don't know that the NFPA rules deal with, um, anger.
We do. We ha- we would have to go back to the, to the video.
No, I, I wanna go back to the, the fire department and say, do you have, and.
I'll just Google it, I don't know.
But I, I think the point being, yeah, Mike Hinsley may be an expert, more of an expert at propane tanks than even any of us in the room here, but in the future, he, he may not be the one that's gonna review them and I think this is a planning and zoning issue that it should be first submitted to David with some professional background of design. And then you're also going to get approval from the fire department, from, from a fire department issue. But, but our big concern is we don't want it floating.
Yeah, and number one also, we're, I'm talking about the overlap of districts.
Yeah.
You know, I think it's important to say, um, you have, where shoreline overlaps, uh, the floodplain, where shoreline overlaps wetlands, not to say, well, it's in the shoreline, so those other districts don't count.
Right, no, I, I think one is, is, that seven, one is a very necessary thing.
Okay.
We need that in there, otherwise you, you may qualify under shoreline but get denied because wetlands flood prone, you know, so you totally need that.
So are we wanting to reword that, that where conservation districts overlap, the tank shall not be located in the wetlands or flood-prone conservation districts? Is that what we're wanting to say?
No, this is an exemption. I read this as an exemption to say, where it's in all three of these, it gets exempted from the wetlands and flood prone, but is that what you intended?
It says it's not located in the wetlands or.
Yeah, I mean, is this, is this meant to be an exemption?
I didn't write this.
I wrote, I wrote it, I wrote it as where, if you have a, let's say, the shoreline and a floodplain, flood-prone district overlap.
Right.
It is not allowed in the flood-prone.
I see. So the, um, the trunk shall not, the, the tank shall not be located in those other conservation districts with it. It should, it's not, but it is not. I thought that.
So that's just a, a simple change of shall, not be.
Located.
Okay.
And by the way, yes, NFPA fifty-eight, liquefied petroleum gas code contains standards for underground propane storage tanks covering all these things, including securing tanks to prevent movement from external forces like flooding or high groundwater. So NFPA does have standards.
But then how would the fire department know where the high water table is?
Well, that's the.
The, the fire department can't, that's why we use a different professional to.
But, but what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that the fire department can say, I'm not qualified to judge this. You need a water table or you need whatever.
I, I still have a hard time just putting it on the fire department, you know, again, Mike Hinsley is very capable, but, you know, and how many years, you know, he may not be there and.
And I thought Rich's point that is if you don't wanna worry about the soil, just say the top, the soil surface.
And just anchor it as you would if it, you were.
Better safe than sorry.
Exactly.
Right.
'Cause at that point, you're not paying to have an excavator come and do a test pit and you're not paying a technician to come and watch the test pit.
Take a big hole and pour a.
I don't know, what's a test pit cost you? Probably a thousand bucks.
Pour a concrete pad and.
It's gonna be cheaper.
It still would need to be engineered, because, you know, depending on the size of the propane tank, determine the buoyancy of the tank and then determine how much concrete is needed and how the, it has, that particular tank has to be.
What kind of straps they.
Right, strapped down.
Right. But rather than six inches of concrete, they put in a foot and a half and, you know, concrete, I don't know what concrete is, a hundred dollars a yard or two hundred dollars a yard.
So I, I've been.
It's like four hundred.
Is it four hundred now?
For foundation, yeah.
Really?
It's four hundred dollars a yard now for foundation, a, a simple foundation.
So, I'm still worried about, I'm now worried about section, section one of that. David, can you assure me that I'm not in wetlands or flood prone?
Yes.
Does it assure you that you are? That I am.
You're not.
I am not.
You're not.
You're in shoreline but not wetlands.
You're not in wetlands and you're not in the flood prone, okay.
Phew, alright. Good.
Because, because then I would have to, yeah.
Well, doesn't, isn't it FEMA who says if you're in flood prone?
No, well, yes and no. So, the town has a flood prone conservation district. The FEMA, FEMA has the flood plain maps, they don't match.
I see.
Which is another issue for the planning board to consider.
Oh, great.
I, I think you should reference the, the firm maps as the flood prone areas. But because the federal government, basically trumps, bad word, but the town ordinance, I have to go by what FEMA says, not by what the town says. So while you have the, the flood prone areas and I look at those, I also look at the, the firm maps and make the determination based on the firm maps.
So your, the suggestion is at some point in the future, we should change the town rules to say, just use the FEMA maps.
If FEMA's still around.
Right. I wonder how we came up with what we have.
They were originally firm maps, but tho- those are things that, that change. Okay.
So I think we're getting down to just two.
I'd like to revisit C one.
Okay, can we get there? Let's do the D two and then get down to C one.
So I can read a, a proposed language for number two.
Yeah.
And then I give it to David if you like it.
Okay.
It would say, underground storage tanks shall be permitted only if they are designed and properly anchored to prevent flotation.
Designed by whom?
The design and installation shall be certified as such by an engineer or other qualified professional. The elevation of seasonal high water table shall be included in the design application, period. In lieu of determining the seasonal high water table, the tank installation may be designed, assuming ground surface elevation to be the seasonal high water table. So.
What, I'm gonna use yours as an example. I highly suspect where your tank is, that you're above the seasonal high water table. So, does your language allow for a tank that's in the shoreline that you could have a, a test pit dug and not need to go through having an engineer design it and put all the concrete in?
Yeah, cuz couldn't the applicant decide, that would be their decision. If they thought they were above or close to it, then they could.
Well, to be able to, you know, the shoreline is two hundred feet from the edge of the water. And if you're almost two hundred feet back and up a hill, chances are good you're not gonna be in the high water table. And I'm not worried about this, and I say yours, I'm, I'm not particularly worried about.
I don't know, you can't, I, that's a huge generalization.
It is, but.
It could be a wetland area.
It could be a wetland, there could be.
Yeah, so you can't say that, I mean, it's, it's.
But I mean, the first sentence still says, underground storage tanks shall be permitted only if they are designed and properly anchored to prevent flotation. So if there's no threat of, of a seasonal high water table flotation, then they don't design for flotation.
But you still need to have someone come in and design it, is what you're, what I'm trying to prevent is spending that, the cost of having an engineer come in and design that.
Well, who's gonna know?
What if you, what if you just had an engineer come in and determine whether it's above the high water table or not? That wouldn't be as expensive and then if he says it's.
Well, that's where I was trying to get at, that, you know, if it's above the high water table, then, you know, the bottom of the, where the tank's going to be. If it's above the high water table, then you're good to go.
You'd still want some qualified professional.
Oh, yeah, you do need.
To tell you that, right.
You do need a qualified professional to determine that.
Right.
But I would like to make it clear that, you know, that can be, you know, that you're not required to have someone come in and do the whole design, only to tell you, you know, you know, hire an engineering firm to come in and do something that a septic designer could come in for a quarter of the cost. You know, dig a test pit, say, oh, yeah, I've gone down four feet, didn't find a high water table, you're going down three feet, we're good to go.
That would be the, the other qualified professional.
Yeah, okay, that's.
I would think, yeah.
That, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that that's.
Anybody?
Say it again, I think, I think I agree, but I'll hear it again.
Underground storage tanks shall be permitted only if they are designed and properly anchored to prevent flotation. The design and installation shall be certified as such by an engineer or other qualified professional. The elevation of seasonal high water table shall be included in the design application. In lieu of determining the seasonal high water table, the tank installation may be designed, assuming ground surface elevation to be seasonal high water table.
So that last sentence says, if you don't wanna do it.
Just use the top.
Just assume that you're gonna have to put a weight on it.
It's gonna float, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that, thank you.
And this is only for the shoreline conservation district.
Correct. And then, there were some questions on section C, so one or two.
But so just to be clear, we're leaving seven, one, and three the same, and we're just changing two?
Yes.
Well, you're changing three to fire chief.
And it should say, submitted and approved by, take out the from, the line fire.
Chief, okay, so we're changing that, eliminating one and. Rich's language for two.
And then one, it's a little changed to that, where it says the tank is not located, so shall not be located.
Yep.
So, somebody have a question on C?
Yeah, I, I, I don't think you should say, you know, that because of the, the prior article, that the propane tank is excluded because that implies that the propane tank would be a threat to surface or groundwater quality. And the fact is that it's not. So I think that what it, and that's really why it's permitted to be buried underground, because it's not. So the way to change this would be, no use which utilizes stores, processes, or disposes of toxic substances which may pose a threat to surface or groundwater quality, including all fuel storage tanks other than propane are permitted. And then eliminate number two. So that puts propane where it should be, which is in a different category, it's not a toxic.
Can you say that again, just to the.
I like it, I.
It's good, it's good net.
No, no use which utilizes stores, processes, or disposes of toxic substances which may pose a threat to surface or groundwater quality, including underground fuel storage tanks other than propane.
Wait, hold on.
Are permitted.
Including underground fuel storage tanks.
I think it is permitted cuz it's no use.
Alright.
Yeah, yeah.
Is permitted.
Yep.
Including underground fuel storage tanks.
Other than propane, and those for propane.
See, they, they're sort of redundant anyway.
Right.
And so, just to, just, if we want to make propane, we wanna highlight the fact that propane tanks are an exception to this rule. We cannot lump it into the group that is toxic and say that's okay in the case of propane because it, it isn't actually toxic.
Right.
I think that's, that's the point that we should.
So you say we're eliminating two.
Yeah, and eliminate two.
Yep, that's cool.
Okay.
It's late, I don't understand that sentence. It's a complex.
Well, I don't understand half the sentence. But I know that it's right, that the, as long as you get the punctuation right, it'll be done.
It's more than two lines, so I don't understand it without a, a period in it somewhere.
Including other than underground storage tanks, other than propane. I mean, that's syntactically and semantically correct. It's law, it, it is law that I keep trying to figure out how.
Could you make it into two sentences?
Well, yeah, you could say a period and then you could say this includes, you can just say is permitted, the same, you just leave number one, first sentence, the same, and then you could say this includes all underground fuel storage tanks other than propane. Yeah, that might be better, have two sentences. A little more clear or easier, yeah.
I mean, that one would change it, right?
No, it's good, but with a multiple clause sentence, you find yourself holding on to the concept here and then waiting for the, like German, waiting to the verb at the end.
Yeah, even, you know, forget what the.
Yeah, where are we going? Yeah, I like it as two sentences.
Yeah, that's better.
So this is under C, additional provisions.
Right.
Right.
So, the suggestion is to have just one point there, but make it two sentences.
Yeah.
So no use blah, 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 is permitted, period. This includes underground fuel tanks.
Except.
Uh, uh, other than propane.
Yes.
And do you, and should you just make it additional provision, colon?
It is.
And eliminate the one and the two.
Oh, it is differently, you don't, you don't do a one and two when there's only a one.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
It just becomes C, you don't, you don't need subs when it's only one point.
Right. Yeah, I would just move that up to C.
Yeah.
Cool.
So it would just be C, additional provisions underli-.
Provision.
No use which utilizes blah, 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 and then the second C.
Could you just get rid of additional provision and just say C?
Yeah.
No use which utilizes and.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, that's.
Alright.
So David, can you put on your list of to do's to fix the table contents of the zoning ordinance?
What's the?
It's, it's like there's, all the zoning districts are in the table of contents.
Okay.
And if we're gonna, like, we just change that heading, so we no longer have additional provisions and that. But just, you know, in March before we reprint, just do that.
Yeah, cuz, yeah, I, I, they're all book, basically bookmarked and I can just update the table of contents.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good, cuz I know, I just noticed that when I was writing out the description.
I was trying to find the acre minimums and I couldn't find that and I was reading.
Is it a dimensional control?
Five, one.
Is it?
Table five, one.
Okay, I was reading the descriptions and I was expecting there to tell me what the size minimum were.
And David, would you also include that beautiful map of the zoning districts?
That is something that you have to do.
Ah.
I can't just throw that in there.
It's part.
So, so that's a separate zoning amendment?
Yes, that would have to be a separate zoning amendment to replace.
Well, interesting, isn't that amazing, okay.
You know, I can't, e- even if I find something that is, if it's a typographical error that I've made in updating it, yes, I can go back and correct it to what the correct thing is. I can't add, change, delete anything in the ordinance unless it is.
And that map is part of the legal blah, blah, blah.
Yes.
Interesting.
So you can't just rewrite the zoning ordinance if you want to?
What?
You can't just rewrite the zoning ordinance, what a bummer.
Not that anyone would ever notice.
Jim Kenyon has retired, otherwise it's zoning administrator goes road.
But no, I, I, I would love to, there's lots of things, I, you know, the deer yard map in there is horrendous.
Come on, the fish and game did that back before you were born.
Yeah, well, he's an ex-marine cuz he ate his crayons too much.
Is it, is it not possible to include that map and just highlight the fact that it's?
Why don't we make it the cover?
I could throw it, I could take and do a map just in the back, that's, but it would not be part of the zoning.
I think it's a thing of beauty.
It, it shows, it just shows.
I spent a lot of time looking at that.
No, I know, I know, so it could be the cover and then we just have, we don't, we don't change, we still have the same wall because they basically say, show the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, the cover is not, I can make any changes to the cover I'd like.
Right, so we could have an illustration instead.
Or you can put it on the back.
Oh, the back, the back.
Yeah, cuz that's the first time we have.
Color, fold out. I had one semi-serious question that's really short. I've been thinking about how to process all these paper surveys and what we did.
I'm there.
Where, you know how to do it?
No, no, no.
Oh.
I was, I was gonna ask for dispensation to pick the ones up from the library and enter them.
Ah, okay. My proposal was, we number them as they, as we dump them all out on the table, somebody numbers them, three hundred, three oh one, three oh two, three oh three. And then people pick them up and as they type them in, they, in the, tell us, is there anything else you wanted to tell us? We put in square brackets the number that was written on the form.
Yeah.
And that way, we can track, you know, wait, that doesn't make any sense. We can go back to the survey and track that.
We can feel, figure out if people are stuffing ballots.
Oh, no, I, but.
I mean, you do.
Yeah.
Because then you would have a number to go back and look and see.
You got two.
Yeah, I got.
No, no, no.
I got sent, I got sent to two different envelopes. And I brought it back to the.
Really?
I brought it back to the postmaster and said, you know, you really shouldn't do this, it's tempting people. Oh, you're so good. And.
I worked with two also in her.
How they get two? They just went around again cuz they had extras.
Well, we, we, I think we had over a hundred extras.
And that, that must have been Noma just being generous and making sure because.
No, it was a much lower count at the post office.
Oh.
Yeah, their count and the count I got off of the.
EDDM.
Yeah, website was a little different, but.
So we gave the post office nine hundred and fifty-two, is that what we gave them?
We gave them like all.
I think we gave them nine hundred and ninety-nine of them, I think.
Oh, well, then why do they have it?
Well, no, they weren't, unless, I think there were a thousand envelopes.
Or how many did we save up?
There was a bunch still in David's office.
You can count them up if you want.
Well, they came back, didn't they?
Yeah, you can count them up if you want.
Well, there's the archive copy.
And I took ten of them down to the library, just for, in case somebody needs one.
Yeah.
But some people, somebody said, I got three in mine.
Oh, no, were there three in the, in the same envelope and they still mailed it? Cuz that would be overweight.
You know, you can't get it at help these days.
He's right, that's right.
Sometimes the folding, sometimes the folding was wrong, you had to look at it. You had to look at it on end to make sure. I always picked them up and separated them. Right, so I think it was Maggie that did it.
Mister Chair, would you ever take any questions?
I would, but we do need to talk about, I mean, I don't wanna hold people up, but we need to, you know, think about how we're putting this together and how the, I have no clue as to how the computer, you know, the online stuff is going in.
Seventy-five.
Yeah.
Online.
Right, so, I mean, the cool part about the.
It's a whole box full of them, a foyer or two.
That's great.
Right.
I probably put in twenty-five.
You put in twenty-five? Didn't you?
Then we received, they are sealed in envelopes that are postmarked as they come in.
Oh, ones that were mailed.
Yeah, ones that were mailed.
Yes, still seventy-five, so this is the survey, this is the survey construction, if you click on responses, you get these sexy pie charts and bar charts and all, and then it goes on and on about, you know, so tell, you know, tell us more about what you think, and, and there's a lot of stuff there, so.
Richard, it's a dumb question, but, so people have done it electronically.
Yes.
So you're saying that, how do we see those, they come to?
They don't, they don't come individually, they're already tabulated.
They're already tabulated here, right, so our plan is.
Tabulating, what's that?
Yeah.
We're gonna do, we plan to do it the same way we did the solar survey, where we all sat here, and we entered all of the paper ones into the online tool.
Right, but then, and so these are.
And then you can pull, then, I mean, Google Forms just does that analysis for you, it's not anything you've decided how, how to present the data.
Right.
But you can download a CSV file and do your own analysis.
But then at some point, then we have to take the electronic ones.
You can download, you can download a CSV file and do your own analysis.
Or you wanna see the actual forms that people filled out, all the individual.
Forms, so then we can tabulate the same way we do the paper ones.
You're gonna do, you're gonna go the other way, you're gonna take the paper ones, enter in the online forms, and then have everything online.
Okay.
And then tabulate everything.
Hebe wants to do the cross-tabulations to see what all the young people think, and if the women think differently than the men.
Well, we didn't, we didn't collect gender.
I know, but, yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, everybody in anthropology is first, first you gotta do age and sex adjustment.
I had a couple of feedback from people that said, that's none of your business, and they didn't even answer it.
I mean, that's right, if I guess, yeah, that's fine.
Well, that's why we put optional.
Right.
Give them a chance to.
Well, I was just gonna look, I, if I could collect some of the paper ones about, you know, watch television and do data entries.
Okay.
It's not something it seems like we should all be bound up with our time in a warned meeting to be doing data entry. I, I mean, I've done a lot of it in my life.
Yeah.
Cuz I, I have a lovely desktop computer with a big monitor, I do not have a laptop to come in here, I have an iPad.
I heard from you last time.
We did.
So each, at some point after the twenty-fifth, we have to get together and do the paper ones.
Tim, I'm just saying, can I enter the ones, can I enter the paper ones?
Oh, you're saying you're gonna do it by yourself without, huh?
Well, no, I do some of them, I'm not committing to hundreds, I'm just saying, can I pick up the ones from the library and get them in?
I see, okay.
And then I'll number them, and if there's more, then give them to the rest of you guys.
Right.
What do people think?
I think, well, you know.
Keep them here?
She, she may have the clearance of a Dominion voting machine, but we're not sure.
Hey, I've.
Does she buy us free?
I don't know. I've been on safety and data monitoring committees, and I've never told anybody how that's.
How many do we have, I mean, if we're only gonna have a hundred, it seems like we could cut those out.
Don't say that, if it's only a hundred, this is really kicking.
Well, we should send out another email.
Exactly.
Yes, yes.
So can you do that, David, the royal we, cuz people need to be reminded before they start eating turkey.
And you wanna, and you wanna maybe put another notification on the list, or?
That's what.
That's what.
Oh, is that the same thing?
Yep, exactly.
And we should put a third one out there, even next week, just.
What I can, I can very easily do is, I'll write up one, send it out next week, at the beginning of the week, and then schedule on, resend it out again.
Can you put a photo in the?
No.
In the list.
Could you send it out tomorrow, then people would have the weekend?
Yeah. Right, and I'll send it out again next week.
Exactly.
And, you know.
Hopefully we'll get a lot better.
Could it, could it say something like, hey, thanks everybody that's already put the survey in?
No.
No? No, I mean, just like, and that's like, oh, wait, other people are doing this, oh, jeez, I guess I will.
Oh, no, and I'll do it again.
Yeah, one of my neighbors said, this is way too complicated, I'm not even gonna deal with this, this is too complicated, I don't have time to do this. I said, you know.
Even the printed version? I think some people, they're like, oh, I can't see the end of it on my computer, therefore I'm not gonna do it, but the print version, I mean, you know what it is.
Well, I think this person was, got all this paper, and they, they thought they had to read all this stuff, and they said, I don't.
Yeah, the paper was a little bit daunting, but when you just look at it, but.
I've had people say, this is really cool, I didn't know where the zoning was.
Yeah.
And I had somebody, as they dropped it in the box, they walked past me, and they say, maybe we'll see some change, and I'm like.
Okay, so we are meeting on the twentieth?
No, we're not, I was.
No.
I thought we were, but we're not.
That's our regular meeting, so we're not meeting on the twentieth?
No, the next meeting would have been Thanksgiving Day.
Right.
And I assume you're not going to meet on the twenty-seventh.
We're not, okay.
The twentieth is actually a zoning board of adjustment in this room.
Yeah, okay.
And then December, you have the meeting on the eleventh, and then, again, assuming you're not gonna meet on Christmas Day.
Right. Do we need to meet on the eighteenth as well?
December?
Yeah.
If you can find another room to meet in.
You have a zoning meeting then?
I have the room reserved for the zoning board.
Oh, okay.
Will they have a meeting then?
Don't know, at least a bit, oh, yes, they do, because I have a septic system that's going to go too close to the road.
Well, the question is, I mean, are we, it's getting down to are we punting talking about this until twenty twenty-six? I guess that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess that's, that's what it'll be.
Well, we have between the eleventh and Christmas, right?
Well, no, that's the thing, we.
The eighteen.
The eighteen.
We can meet somewhere else.
What I meant was any day.
And we could also do a daytime meeting instead of a night meeting. That worked out pretty well for stuffing envelopes. We don't have to meet at night, the only reason we do that is so that applicants aren't at work when we hear their cases.
Because it's amazing, none of us are, we're all retired, that's crazy.
So, so the question, the first question is, do we wanna do this tabulation altogether here? Do we, very graciously, would appreciate Hebe doing it, but do we want to, for the sake of whatever.
Appearances, optics, you know.
Well, if everything's properly numbered, you can always get back to the source material.
Right.
Of course, the other thing, depending how many you do, if we, if we have to come and do a whole bunch together, doing a few more that you would do may not matter much.
We don't know.
Yeah, she could be doing all of them, like.
All seven.
I kind of feel like the optics of it suggests that we should do it in a public meeting. As much as Hebe is wonderful, and Hebe and Rich both deserve credit for helping get this thing out of here. And then for the envelope stuffers, which were me and Tim and Nat.
Vicki, she was here.
Oh, and Vicki.
I was surprised the liquor, okay.
Yeah, that's right. Vicki has a dry tongue.
They were all well sealed, weren't they? David and I did the sealing.
Isn't there a Seinfeld episode?
Oh, I don't know either.
Oh, the, the woman licked all the envelopes and died, cuz it was toxic, toxic.
So I think we should go.
All right.
Are we all done?
Yeah.
So, have you decided on the next meeting, or are you gonna?
Let, let's just see what happens on the, on the, in December.
Okay, cuz in December, remember that, that one meeting in December, you have, you're gonna relook at the zoning amendment for propane tanks, and you have a public hearing on the curb cut.
If we're not gonna meet on the twentieth, why don't we meet the first week in December? And then meet again on the eleventh, so the fourth and the eleventh.
So, maybe the first week in December, that's when we can relate.
Yeah, yeah, cuz they're, they're due on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, well, that was what I was saying.
That works.
We have December.
I mean, is anybody but?
And Hebe will just cut you out, you'll, you'll miss out.
Can we get her a loader, a loner, laptop?
Have several laptops.
Yeah, we'll bring a loner, for a loner, for Hebe.
Yeah, she always had to do it.
Decided three different forms of Macintosh was quite enough, I didn't get a laptop too.
Can't you do the same thing on a tablet?
It's awkward, cuz there's no separate keyboard, it's a little brutal.
Yeah, it was slow on this alert.
Or you can show us how to do it.
But it, it's also nice to work on your parents.
Right, and, and you know, something that I wrote, I wrote up this whole description, but basically, there's always a question, what is, what is this saying, what are, what are those words?
Yeah, we had that in the solar.
Oh, yeah.
What, what were they trying to say?
Well, there's, what words did they write down, and then what are they trying to say?
Yeah.
Okay, so, see you December four?
December fourth.
Great, thank you.
What, what time, same time?
Same time would be seven o'clock, or same time would be six thirty? We like six thirty, I mean, if we got off, if we got out at eight thirty, that would be good. I mean, it's dark anyway, it's six thirty, what are you doing, no one's out in the garden.
We'll early eat there, I guess, for me.
So we don't wanna do it, we don't wanna do it during the day.
I have to be here at six thirty.
That's too early.
Start doing the dinner at like five thirty.
Oh, yeah, you could need, definitely need to eat, plan to eat early, that's true.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock today.
Nine thirty in the day.
Well, if you wanna do one during the day.
I will double check that, but I normally during.
At that time.
Thursday nights are not a problem.